I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, November 23rd, 2021, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber and via Zoom teleconference, which meeting link can be found on the agenda and on the city's website calendar. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Lovering, and Alderman Lopez will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, who is with us, and who governs us with his great power, and who governs us with his great wisdom. Amen.
Okay, let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. If you are participating via Zoom, please state your presence, reason for not attending the meeting in person, and whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to no law. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderman Clea.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
President.
Alderman Dow.
President.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
President.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Tanza.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
President.
Alderman Lars.
President.
Alderman Cleaver.
Here, attending via Zoom because of mobility issues, and I am alone.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
President.
Alderman Wilscher.
Here.
And if I could please just go back to call the roll for Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Clemmons.
I am here. I am participating via Zoom due to work commitments, and I'm in the room by myself.
Alderman Tanza. And Alderman Schmidt. You have nine physically in attendance and two participating via Zoom. Thank you. You're welcome.
Also, joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President. First, again, as has been my custom recently, to update you on some of the COVID statistics. Unfortunately, the COVID numbers continue to rise as we hit really a new peak in terms of the pandemic. We've talked about the two metrics that are used most often, those being the positivity rate, or the percentage of people who test for COVID who turn up to have the virus, and the number of new cases per 100,000 people during the last 14 days. These are standard metrics used across the state and across the country. Positivity rate, most recently, has been 14.8%, up from 1% during the low. This is higher than during the peak of the pandemic, the previous peak, but there are fewer people being tested, but still a number that is, unfortunately, high. Secondly, the number of cases per 100,000 people in the last 14 days is 1,018. This is 150 or so higher than the last time we met. It's been rising every week for the last few months. We need to continue to exercise caution. We've said this over and over, but people need to get vaccinated, get the boosters. We currently have 52 or so percent of the total population in Nashville is vaccinated with, fully vaccinated, 57 or 8% with one dose, and about 40% of the 12- to 19-year-old population is vaccinated. So we need to exercise caution, wear masks, and get vaccinated, and try to keep yourselves, your family, and your friends safe. One thing on the agenda, Madam President, that I'm very happy about is the appointment of John Griffin, currently the CFO, to also serve as City Treasurer. That nomination came before you and has been reviewed by the Personnel Committee, and they, of course, recommended his appointment. We have three principal financial positions in the city, those being the CFO, the Comptroller, and the Treasurer. Typically, one person has held two of those jobs. John Griffin has been the Comptroller and the CFO. Before John Griffin, we had Paul Martel, who was the CFO and the Treasurer. Now, a person can't hold all three, so assuming you confirm Mr. Griffin as the Treasurer, he would function in that capacity, and we would designate someone else in the financial area as the Comptroller. Mr. Griffin, as you've seen over the last 11 years, and he's been with the city 11 years, knows the city finances very well. He has been in front of you many, many times on top of all of the city's finances, and he has worked closely with Treasurer David Fedet over a number of years in terms of the responsibilities of the Treasurer, including supervising and monitoring the bonding that the city does, the borrowing of money, also the trust accounts and other, some of the other responsibilities under the Treasurer's position. So given our knowledge of Mr. Griffin's competence and our confidence in him, I believe it is the best step, the best choice, to go forward and have Mr. Griffin be the Treasurer and the tax collector, the Treasurer tax collector, as well as the CFO, and go return to, of course, the Martel model that we had before Mr. Griffin was here. So I hope that you will follow the recommendation of the Personnel Committee confirming Mr. Griffin, and I'm sure he will do, he will serve the city very well and follow in the very competent footsteps of our current City Treasurer and friend, David Fedet. Madam President, there was one thing I wanted to comment on concerning the various resolutions that are on your agenda about assembling the money necessary to move forward with the Public Works Garage at the landfill. Total cost of that project is currently $15 million. Some of the funds are coming from the sale of Burke Street, other from the authorization previously passed by the Board of Aldermen. Some of the funds transferred, would be transferred from the Broad Street Parkway unused, money borrowed but unused, and then finally, there's some additional authorization. But one thing happened last night, and Madam President, I believe you were at the public hearing, along with most of the members of the board. A member of the public came forward and said with great confidence and assurance, "The mayor said, the mayor said on November 17th, just a few days before, that the cost of this project would be," said at the Finance Committee, "that the cost of the project would be $12 million." And why is it now $15? Came on again and said that a second time, great assurance, just with ultimate conviction. Let's examine that. First of all, although the Finance Committee was scheduled to meet that night, we didn't meet. So when you begin with, "at the Finance Committee meeting," totally false, there was no meeting, excuse me, no meeting at all. And obviously, since there was no meeting, I didn't say anything at the non-meeting, nor did I say that it would be $12 million. But this was asserted with great conviction. So if you look back to what did occur, the meeting was canceled because of conflicts of various members, and there was something on the agenda, a memo, saying that the construction cost would be $12 million. But that memo was not written by me, I was not the author, so I, even if someone was substituting, I said rather than I wrote, I didn't write the memo. And ultimately, if you read the memo, it makes it very clear that the total cost is $15 million, that the $12 million is the construction cost plus design and other soft costs. So $12 million is the construction contract, but the total cost might be $15. Now, this is the kind of thing we've been seeing a lot recently here at the Board of Aldermen. People come on, they say something like, "Sounds plausible and true," but absolutely false, which is exactly what happened last night. We've heard this over and over again. Typically, we don't really call it out, but this time it was so obvious, it just happened yesterday, there wasn't even a meeting, that I thought I would emphasize it and ask people to please, please try to stick to the facts. Finally, Madam President, I wanted to mention to you something that was unfortunate and happened in Concord in the last week or two. There is something called the Energy Efficiency Resource Standard. That's a technical name for the state program by which the utility typically ever source, but all of the utilities reimburse customers for a portion of the cost of energy efficiency projects. And under the program that has been adopted in Concord over recent years, the budget for that program has been increasing year by year. And it, of course, makes sense for everyone, because oftentimes, it is cheaper for the utility to incentivize efficiency projects than it is to try to create additional capacity for energy creation. But unfortunately, and a surprise to everyone, the PUC issued new regulations which drastically cut the budget for that program. Money comes from the utility, and, as I said, the money has been going up year by year, and we, the city, benefits from it. For example, we expected out at the police station with the HVAC project to get about a $75,000 rebate. We're likely to get far less than that if this really is finalized. But they reduced the budget for this energy efficiency program back to 2017 levels, which is less than, as I understand it, less than or about half of the amount for the current fiscal year. Unfortunately, I will be writing a letter to the PUC and others about this, along with a lot of other people who hope that this can be reversed and we can return on a path to energy efficiency for, to encourage energy efficiency both here in Nashville and across New Hampshire. And Madam President, I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving in a couple of days. Good time to be with our friends and family. Maybe stay close to home if you can because of this COVID outbreak, COVID spike, but please just enjoy your holiday and try to stay safe. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Responses to the remarks of the mayor. Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you. I'd like to respond to your recommendation of CFO Griffin, Griffin for Treasurer. My concern is that we don't have a comptroller at this time, so essentially, by placing CFO Griffin in charge of Treasurer and tax collector, we're essentially mixing those two positions that should be separated. So I won't be supporting this, not because I don't think that CFO Griffin is a very capable person, but the proper procedure would have been, or should be, to find a replacement for one of those two before taking Mr. Griffin and placing him in another position. Thank you.
Well, of course, that assumes that we have no one on staff that we could designate as comptroller.
I'm not assuming anything. I'm simply, if you have something to share, please share.
Well, there's nothing to share because you haven't confirmed, you haven't confirmed him yet, but once he confirms them, I'm pretty confident we'll be able to come up with a comptroller in short order.
May I respond? My hopes is that not that you can come up with someone that can provide us with that very important service, but that you would have someone fully trained and fully capable of taking on that role before you start mixing.
Pardon me, but we do have that on staff.
Please tell.
You'll find out as soon as I make the appointment.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. It seems kind of funny to say this at this point, but the, in regards to the person who the mayor mentioned, made false comments last night, I was at that meeting as well. That same person said that Nashville doesn't have a republican form of government today. So, you know, I think we can basically just rule out some people aren't living in reality, and we have to consider the source. So, Mayor, don't feel bad, keep doing what you're doing, and I guess we'll get through the crazy. Thanks.
Anyone else? Responses to the remarks of the mayor. Seeing none? Recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the Board of Aldermen meeting of November 9th be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communications have been received from Donna Graham, Legislative Affairs Manager, regarding communications received from the public, from Lisa M. Photo, Director of Public Works, regarding the referrals from the Board of Aldermen on resolutions R21179, R21187, and R21189, and from Celia K. Leonard, Deputy Corporation Counsel, regarding the August 31st, 2021 flatly rezoning petition.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Without objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for a communication that was received after the agenda was prepared.
I object.
Duly noted.
Communication has been received from Lori Wilscher, President of the Board of Aldermen, regarding the inauguration committee.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have one person signed up, Lori Ordolano.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. First item is the Public Works bonds and appropriations that you're going to approve tonight. Last night, Director Photo spoke to you about a parking study having been done. I was concerned about that. I don't know how many of you took a look at that parking study on the website, but I'm going to tell you, it's very substandard. It did not look at truck traffic at all. And I think it was done early when the building wasn't going to be all-inclusive of all those different departments, because that building started off as an office building and morphed into a more complete and full facility except for sewer and wastewater. So, and I think it was a homespun parking study, and I really think it is not complete, and not the kind of parking study that would justify the size of that facility and the parking and the trucks that you have over there. Secondly, regarding CFO Griffin's position, you know, I too have some concerns. I think Elizabeth Lou made a very valid point about the comptroller position. I don't think that position was covered enough and discussed enough, and I think it's fair to say, who do we have, and get an answer in a public meeting on that, not be deflected and deferred and say, wait, vote him in, wait, and then we'll tell you. I think that's not as open as it should be. Also, I would like to see, you know, if this is going to be a combined position, that the office hours for this person be in City Hall from 8:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, that it not be a flex job or a job that you can work from home or not at the office. I think it makes a big difference to the people in the office, the people in Dave Fedet's area that come to him often, and he's there during that entire time. I think you have to have coverage in the office with somebody there. Also, regarding your comments about the public saying things that don't make any sense, you know, there's a couple ways to handle that. When you say to the public, you know, "Do your homework" or "Do a better job," I want you to know, I mean, those weren't my comments, but however, doing that is difficult in City Hall. You don't come here and find many open doors. You don't pick up the phone and call and get people to return calls. You may have a meeting and it's five days to get a response. So this City Hall operates differently, let's say, than Manchester. Go up there and you can get reports in a, you know, an hour.
30 seconds.
So I think it's better, instead of dressing down citizens in a public meeting, had you picked up the phone or somebody in your city picked up the phone and talked to that individual to clarify what was going on. That's not done as often, and so I regret to see the approach taken here publicly against any citizen for failing to say the right thing. Thank you.
Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from David G. Fedet, Treasurer tax collector, regarding the Division of Public Works, Street Department, purchase replacement for one 2009 Chevy C4500 utility body, one 2016 trackless MT6 Sidewalk tractor from fiscal year 2022 Capital Equipment Reserve Fund, sir.
And I could get to speak.
Understood. One moment, please. Sorry, Madam Clerk. Ms. Calhoun, you can speak.
Thank you. 30 Greenwood Drive. First of all, obviously, the mayor doesn't read his agendas, because on the Finance Committee of November 17th, item number eight, from Kelly Parkinson, she said, "Construction Management Services for a new Department of Public Works Administration building in the amount not to exceed $12,025,000, funded by account number 54210." The reason I remember that, and I called up Mr. Griffin, is because that was considered Led Hazzard, which obviously is incorrect, is obviously written in the agenda for the city, and somebody obviously had this information for a resident to find out. Obviously, that was November 17th, and all of a sudden, now it's $15 million. Yes, we're allowed to question why something goes from $12 million to $15 million. However, half the stuff we get from the city of Nashville is incorrect, so it doesn't surprise me. So just make sure you know your facts, Mr. Mayor, before you say anything. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Would you like me to repeat that communication?
Clemmons says, "This is what I call a dictatorship and not a republic."
Ms. Calhoun, you're done. Thank you. Madam Clerk, I'm sorry.
Communication has been received from David G. Fedet, Treasurer tax collector, regarding the Division of Public Works, Street Department, purchase replacement for one 2009 Chevy C4500 utility body, one 2016 trackless MT6 Sidewalk tractor from fiscal year 2022 Capital Equipment Reserve Fund, sir.
Alderman Dow.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of a trackless MT7 articulated tractor from HB Fairfield of Hopkinton, New Hampshire, for a price of $166,258 for the Division of Public Works, Street Department. This vehicle will replace the 2016 trackless MTG Sidewalk tractor vehicle ID number 16-060, and approve the purchase of a 2022 Ford F-350 pickup truck from MHQ Marlboro, Mass., for a price of $77,662.80 for the Division of Public Works, Street Department. This vehicle will replace the 2009 Chevy C4500 utility body vehicle ID number 40. Funding will be approved through the FY2022 Capital Equipment Reserve Fund, SERF, contingent on the approval of the Finance Committee.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you. I wasn't able to attend the budget meeting yesterday. During that meeting, was it covered why the price went up 50% on, I believe it was this vehicle? If not, it was the other vehicle?
This was not covered in the budget meeting last night.
Oh, okay.
Further discussion?
Is this the item that's pending?
You have to speak to the chair.
Yes. A follow-up, please?
Yes.
Is, for anyone that can answer, is this an item that is pending finance approval?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Wilscher.
Yes.
You have 11 yeses and 1 nay.
And that motion carries.
Communication has been received from David G. Fedet, Treasurer tax collector, regarding the purchase replacement of one 2014 Toro 5910 mower, DPW Parks and Recreation, from fiscal year 2022 Capital Equipment Reserve Fund, sir.
Alderman Dow.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of a ground master 5910 T4 from the Turf Products of Enfield, Connecticut, for a price of $137,537.19 for the Division of Public Works and Recreation Department. This vehicle will replace the 2014 Toro 5910 mower vehicle ID number 15-542. Funding will be approved through the FY2022 Capital Equipment Reserve Fund, SERF, contingent on the approval of the Finance Committee.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you. I wanted to ask why, why recommendation of Finance Committee is expected on this item. I know that we're taking this ahead of the cart, ahead of the horse with this. We had a meeting canceled last week because a couple of the members of the Finance Committee had something else to do, so we haven't discussed this in committee. And I just, I mean, if, if this is agreeable to everyone, and the last item was agreeable to everyone, then perhaps we should just do away with the Finance Committee.
Alderman Lou, this is pending approval of the Finance Committee.
Correct.
The contracts are of a value that requires it to go to finance for approval, so it will go to finance for final approval, and the funding is coming out of the SERF account.
I understand that. Thank you.
You've heard the motion. Is there further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, would the court please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Wilscher.
Yes.
You have 11 yeses and 1 nay.
And that motion carries. Petitions.
Petition has been received for rezoning Gateway Hills off Research Drive, lots A798, A1010, and A1011.
There being no objection, I will accept the petition for rezoning, refer it to the Planning and Economic Development Committee and Planning Board, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen hearing, public hearing, for Tuesday, December 21st, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
There is none.
Reports of committees. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the October twenty-seventh, 2021 Joint Meeting Committee on Infrastructure and Planning and Economic Development Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the November first, 2021 Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the November eighth, 2021 Human Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll suspend, suspend the rules to allow for the oral report of the Budget Review Committee meeting held Monday, November twenty-second, 2021 regarding Resolutions 21180, 21186, 21188, 21190, 21191, and 21192. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, we had a meeting of the Budget Committee last night and on the referenced resolutions, R-21180 approving the cost items of a sidebar memorandum of agreement between the City of Nashville Board of Fire Commissioners and the Nashville Firefighters Association, IAFF Local 789, regarding military duty pay that passed the Budget Committee unanimously. On R-21186, relative to the rescinding of authorized unissued debt, that also passed unanimously. On R-21188, authorizing a one-time stipend to Board of Public Works Retirement System retirees as requested by the Board of Public Works Retirement System Board of Trustees, that was tabled, waiting for a formal approval motion from the Board of Public Works Retirement System Board of Trustees. R-21190, which is relative to the supplemental appropriation of three million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of FY 22 unanticipated revenue into the Division of Public Works Office Facility Capital Project, that was approved unanimously. R-21191, changing the purpose of two million dollars of unexpected bond proceeds from the Broad Speed Parkway Project to the Division of Public Works Office Facility Project, that was also passed unanimously. And R-21192, authorizing the mayor and the city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of three million dollars for additional costs for the design and construction of Division of Public Works Office Facility, that also passed unanimously.
There being no objection, I'll send, no? That was the oral report. Thank you. Confirmation of mayor's appointments? There being no objection, I'll confirm the appointment of John L. Griffin of Tingsboro, Mass. to the Office of CFO, Treasurer-Tax Collector with an indefinite term. Mr. Griffin, if you would come forward and take the oath of office?
In my hand, you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially, in charge of performing all the duties incumbent upon you, as chief financial officer, treasurer and tax collector of the City of Nashville, according to the best of your ability and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the City Charter and the Constitution and laws of the State of New Hampshire for healthy God.
Congratulations, Mr. Griffin. Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of Resolution R-21179, authorizing the mayor to enter into a federal aid program project agreement with the state of New Hampshire for the purpose of installing rectangular, rapid-flashing beacons and to accept four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars for the project.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage. Sorry. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-21179 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, no one on Zoom? Alderman Lopez?
I just would like to comment, it's important that we pay attention to pedestrian safety. There was a woman who was struck by a vehicle this past weekend. It's a big city. It's difficult to notice, to identify all the locations that can use crosswalks like this. If people see areas in their neighborhoods that are interested in improving traffic safety, please reach out to us so that we can help when able. But I'm hoping that this, this funding and this project will be able to improve safety in areas that we've already been working on.
Thank you. Anyone else? No one on Zoom? Okay, the motion is for final passage of Resolution 21179 by roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harry Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have twelve yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 21175 is declared duly adopted. Before we go on, I meant to make an announcement for the record that Alderman Schmidt did join us at 7:37 PM. Thank you.
Second reading of Resolution R-21180, approving the cost items of a sidebar memorandum of agreement between the City of Nashville Board of Fire Commissioners and the Nashville Firefighters Association, IAFF Local 789, regarding military duty pay.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion for final passage of R-21180 by roll call. Can I speak briefly?
Alderman O'Brien.
What this is, as you all know, as a past member of Nashville Fire Rescue of thirty-five years, this agreement has always, in some form, had been there. But upon recently, they did through negotiations change go to a 24-hour shift. They are still working forty-eight hours a week, but there was a question on how to pay people who do military service. Currently, right now, I think there is only three current members of the department that are true, truly patriotic, that give up their extra time to satisfy their requirement as part of their military duty. So this will ensure that these firefighters will meet their pay. It's very similar to what exists currently with the police department as well, and I urge your support. Thank you.
Motion is for final passage. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harry Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have twelve yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries. Resolution 21180 is duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R-21186, relative to the rescinding of authorized unissued debt.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I move for final passage of R-21186 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage by roll call. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harry Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have twelve yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Resolution 21186 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R-21188, authorizing a one-time stipend to the Board of Public Works Retirement System retirees as requested by the Board of Public Works Retirement System Board of Trustees.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion for final passage of R-21188 by roll call and to speak briefly.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Currently, I'm very proud to report back to the full board that the current BPW Retirement System, which currently exists of a hundred and eight retirees and a hundred and sixty active employees, is healthy. It is healthy to the, to the point that the current fund ratio for the pension fund is approximately eighty-eight percent. That's better than what the city is getting off the state that we do pay. So we do manage in the municipality the pension system very well. But unfortunately, within the pension system, we do not give cos or cost of living increases. So in every point in time, we do look at the particular funding and if it is available with the numbers that we're having right now of eighty-eight percent, we'll give the retirees a one check only. They did receive this, this was done in the past. I think that they received it in 2017, so it's been approximately five years where they haven't received this additional check. That additional check helps them to compensate for what is being lost through inflation and other issues. So it's, we do it around this time of year. It's a nice little Christmas present to our people who collected our trash, plowed our streets, mowed our, you know, parks and everything else, and I feel that they are deserving, so I urge your support. Thank you, Madam President.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 21188 by roll call. Discussion? Alderman Dowd.
I thought this was tabled last night. Did we get an indication for a final vote from?
Thank Alderman Dowd. I, I thought Alderman Clemmons did make the motion last night to reconsider, and we did reconsider it.
We did.
With, with the amendment pending, and probably it should read as such, pending the approval of the Board of Trustees.
Right, right.
And I'm willing to make that amendment.
Okay.
Okay. Madam President, may I be recommend, do you want to do it now to have it include the amendment?
Yes.
Then it should be read, R-21188, authorizing a one-time stipend to the Board of Public Works Retirement System retirees as requested by the Board of Public Works Retirement System Board of Trustees, pending their approval. And if, can I explain that briefly? That amended change?
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. Being on the trustee for the Board of Public Works, what unfortunately happened, it, everybody was in so joy and unison of approving this, it seems by looking at a later date at the particular meeting minutes, that even though everybody, you know, nodded and was in full agreement, that there wasn't truly a formal vote. But I contestify in my good name as a member of the Board of Trustees, it has the unanimous support of the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Discussion on that motion? Alderman Clemmons.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Just to be clear, this is a motion to amend, correct? To be contingent on the approval of the retirement board?
Yes.
Yeah.
Motion is to amend.
Okay.
So the motion is to amend by adding the...
The approval of the Board of Trustees of the BPW Retirement System.
By roll call.
By roll call, yes. Discussion on the motion to amend? Alderman Jettie.
So, thank you. So after we, we discovered that it was, that little, the trustees were approving this, but they didn't take a formal vote, there was a question whether or not we could proceed legally, and so we, the amendment was that we were going to check with legal to make sure that we can go ahead and approve it pending the approval of the trustees, and I just want to hear from corporate counsel that we are proceeding okay here and that we can do it. We're putting the, kind of a horse, carpet for the horse, and if that's okay, that's fine.
Attorney Bolton?
It's okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Motion is to amend. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harry Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have eleven yeas and one nay.
That motion carries. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion for final passage of R-21188, as amended, and by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harry Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have eleven yeas and one nay.
That motion carries. Resolution 21188 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R-21190, relative to the supplemental appropriation of three million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars from fiscal year 2021, unanticipated revenue into the Division of Public Works Office Facility Capital Project.
Alderman Jettie.
I move for final passage of R-21190 by roll call.
Motion is for...
I'd like to speak on that.
Alderman Jettie.
So this is part of the, the new Department of Public Works building that's going to be constructed at the landfill. This is part of the financing package. This three million, six hundred and fifty thousand represents the proceeds from the sale of the Burke Street property. The Burke Street property was purchased with the idea of converting the existing buildings there into a Board of, Department of Public Works building. It turned out that it was not suitable for that, so the city subdivided part of the land and reserved it for future expansion of the wastewater treatment plant and the, and also took part of the land and reserved it for conservation land around the Salmon Brook and that little pond that's in that area. And then the remaining parcel was recently sold, and this is the three million, six hundred and fifty thousand. And that, those proceeds are going to be used for the building, partly used for the building of this Department of Public Works building, which was its original purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Dowd.
I concur with everything that Alderman Jettie said, but we amended it last night because it's FY 2022 unanticipated revenues. So the, the motion before us is to approve the FY, the money coming from FY 2022. It was amended at the budget meeting last night.
So...
So we would have to approve the amendment here.
Okay.
So I'll first make a, a motion to amend to, so that it reads fiscal year 2022 instead of fiscal year 2021, wherever it appears in the, in the resolution.
Thank you, Alderman Jettie. The motion is to amend. There was a typo. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have twelve yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Alderman Jettie.
So I now make-
Is this thing allowed to speak?
No.
No, not at this point.
Hell! Hell!
Not allowed to do that either.
So you're destroying my neighborhood. You're destroying my neighborhood.
This is a public-
Without due respect, without due respect.
Okay. Alderman Jettie.
Uh, so now I move for final passage of R twenty-one dash one ninety as amended by roll call.
Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have eleven yeas and one nay.
And that motion carries. Resolution twenty-one, one ninety is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of Resolution R twenty-one, one ninety-one, changing the purpose of two million dollars of unexpended bond proceeds from the Broad Street Parkway project to the Division of Public Works Office Facility project.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of R twenty-one dash one ninety-one by roll call.
You've heard the motion? Is there discussion on the motion? Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you. Is it possible to, um, know what the interest rate on these bonds is currently?
Well, these bonds aren't being sold today or right away. They don't sell them until sometime in the future.
The interest? This is the Broad Street Parkway. Are, are we talking about one ninety-one?
We are.
Okay. These bonds have already been sold, I thought, and we're paying interest on them.
So you want to know what the interest rate is?
Like I said, the interest rate, yes.
I don't have that information.
Is there anyone, uh, treasurer for debt? Uh, okay. I wondered whether they had been part of a re, uh, a refinance of that debt so that they're at more current levels. I'm not generally in favor of, of, um, rolling over this debt into another project, and that's why I asked, but I thought I saw Mr. Forde.
Well, you may not be prepared to answer that question. You might have asked him when you saw the agenda, and he might have been able to answer it.
Right.
Before the meeting?
And I did not, and if he's not able to answer it, then he can certainly tell me that, but I don't think he's here, so, thank you.
Motion is for final passage by roll call. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have eleven yeas and one nay.
That motion carries, and Resolution twenty-one, one ninety-one is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R twenty-one, one ninety-two, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of three million dollars for additional costs for the design and construction of a division of Public Works Office Facility.
Alderman Dow.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R twenty-one, one ninety-two by roll call.
You've heard the motion? Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, with Alderman Lou.
Thank you. It would be helpful to me to have the question that was raised just clarified, because I too had planned to be at the finance meeting in which we were told that there was a twelve million dollar, twelve point something million dollar limit, um, on this project.
That has already been discussed this evening, Alderman Lou.
This evening?
Yes, this evening. In the mayor's comments, he discussed that.
But I, I could clarify it again. The twelve-
He simply said that it was-
You want me to clarify it again?
Mayor?
The twelve million dollars is the amount that's going to be paid to the construction manager, meaning the hard construction. But as the memo that went to the Finance Committee, there was no meeting, so, but the memo, as the memo said, the author is not me, but the person is saying, "I am requesting a not-to-exceed figure of twelve million, two, twenty-five thousand to be used to approve this contract." This is the cons, the hard construction contract. This represent a construction budget of ten million, five hundred and twenty-five thousand, and a fifteen hundred dol-, a one million, five hundred thousand dollar contingency budget. These figures align with previous representations, in other words, previous statements which have been made for a long time, targeting a total, total project budget of fifteen million dollars. So the twelve million is just the construction, the hard construction and the construction management, but in addition to that, there's design, other soft costs, there's testing, there's something called a commissioning agent, there are other things beyond what's being paid to the construction manager for the construction. That's stated in the memo that would have gone, that would have been discussed by the Finance Committee, um, if that meeting had gone forward, which it didn't. So this will come to the next Finance Committee meeting for the approval of that contract. If that contract is approved, of course, and now if the funds are approved tonight and this contract is approved, then the job will go forward.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution twenty-one, one ninety-two by roll call. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have twelve yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution twenty-one, one ninety-two is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
There is none.
New business resolutions.
First reading of Resolution R twenty-one, one ninety-five, relative to the acceptance of an additional one hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and ten dollars from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into public health and community services grant activity, fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, regional public health network services.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dow, Alderman Karen, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Harriet Gathright. Anyone on Zoom? No, and myself. There, the, this is one of several pieces of legislation this evening that we've been asked to do a second reading on. It's public health, it has to do, all these have to do with immunizations, uh, HIV prevention, tuberculosis. There's no matching funds for these grants, but these grants do have to go before the governor and council on their December, December seventh meeting, and that's why they're asking for a second reading this evening. There is no local match required for these. Um, that's, like I said, there are tuberculosis, HIV, immunizations, COVID-nineteen, lead poisoning. So we'd like to have a second reading this evening. So suspend the rules to allow for a second reading. Alderman Clemens.
Uh, I would, uh, make a motion to suspend the rules, allow for a second reading of R twenty-one, one ninety-five.
Thank you. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Cle.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam President. Um, this is obviously not going to cost the city any, but it's going to help our citizens, and, um, I'm sure it'll go through here unanimously, so thank you.
Thank you. Motion is to suspend the rules for a second reading. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have twelve yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution R twenty-one, one ninety-five, relative to the acceptance of an additional one hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and ten dollars from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into public health and community services grant activity, fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, regional park health network services.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion for final passage by roll call.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Jettie.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to support these, and I'm going to support the others for the reasons that you've indicated, but, um, you know, I would like to say that when, when we're going to be asked to do something like this, um, I mean, obviously you knew that, that this, that we're looking for a second reading tonight. You know, it would have been nice for the rest of us to have been alerted to that, um, you know, some kind of a memo explaining, you know, that that was going to be requested and what the reasons are. That would be very helpful. I mean, we're all, um, you know, trusting, and, and we have no reason not to trust the Public Health Department, but, um, you know, it would, it would have been nice for us to be warned that this request was coming forward, but I will support it for the reasons you've indicated.
I appreciate that, and, and next time I know of this, I will send out a memo. It, I just learned of this, I think this morning, so, yeah, I will next time. Thank you for that, Alderman Jettie.
Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
Uh, just a contributing observation, um, at the last Board of Health meeting, they discussed anticipating these funds coming in, and, uh, at that point, they became aware that they were likely to, with the timeframe of submitting them here and the timeframe of the relative committees that need to be involved, there was concern that they might be close to the date, so I'd recommend it to them that they had, that they try to ask the chair of the committee, the relevant committees, for a special meeting, but given the date that was just read, uh, for when it needs to be on the, the governor's desk, even that wouldn't have worked, because it would have to come back here. So I don't know that, um, President Wiltshire is entirely to blame. I think she's just trying to be flexible, uh, for public health needs so that we're able to put the resources that we are eligible for into use effectively and don't let them get caught up in bureaucratic issues.
Further discussion? Alderman Lou.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate, uh, Alderman Jettie's point, and, um, just to clarify, I, I don't think there's any question that, that, uh, the president, um, did anything wrong. Um, I, I think the point is just that, that type of insight, um, as to why we are moving things along this way, um, is helpful, and it's helpful to everyone. Yeah, I don't think that there was any question that you did this, anything on purpose. It sounds like you found something out this morning, so, um, thank you.
Further discussion? Want to Zoom? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have twelve yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries. Resolution twenty-one, one ninety-five is declared duly adopted.
First reading of Resolution R twenty-one, one ninety-six, relative to the acceptance of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred dollars from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into public health and community services grant activities, fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, and fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, immunization program of greater Nashua.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dow, Alderman Karen, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Harriet Gathright, and myself. Anyone on Zoom? No? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to so suspend the rules for a second reading of R dash twenty-one dash one ninety-six by roll call.
Motion is to suspend the rules for a second reading. Alderman Lopez.
Um, I, I just wanted a clarification to the, Madam President. Are we just going to be doing this for this motion as well, or is it possible to suspend the rules for the ones that we need to read, specifically the public health grants as a collective? So suspend the rules to read and then the resolutions go at once?
We could do that. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. Uh, thank, I thank Alderman Lopez. Madam Chair, I would like to change my motion to so read that R dash twenty-one, one ninety-six, R dash twenty-one, one ninety-seven, R dash twenty-one, ninety-eight, one ninety-eight, and R dash twenty-one, one ninety-nine, and R dash twenty-one, two hundred, and R twenty-one dash two oh one, uh, that we so suspend the rules as to give a second reading.
You've heard the motion.
By roll call, please.
Yes. You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President, and it, it's actually not a discussion on that, but will we be able to, um, do the sponsor of each of these as well after we've done the suspension, just for the record?
Yeah, we, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Further discussion on the motion? The clerk call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright. Alderwoman Harriet Gathwright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 12 ayes and zero nays.
That motion carries.
Second reading of resolution R-21196 relative to the acceptance of $177,500 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into Public Health and Community Services Grant Activities FY22, FY23, and FY24 Immunization Program of Greater Nashua.
Okay, so before I ask for the vote, I'm going to ask for additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleve, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Karen, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Harriet Gathwright, myself, Alderman Cleaver. Okay. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to final passage of R-21196 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of resolution 21196. Would the clerk, further discussion on that motion? Will the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza, I'm sorry. Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathwright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 12 ayes and zero nays.
That motion carries and resolution 21196 is duly adopted.
First reading of resolution R-21197 relative to the acceptance of $87,500 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into Public Health and Community Services Grant Activities Fiscal Year 2022, Fiscal Year 2023, and Fiscal Year 2024 Tperculosis Program of Greater Nashua.
Additional sponsors? The same group. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleve, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Karen, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Harriet Gathwright, and myself.
Second reading of resolution R-21197 relative to the acceptance of $87,500 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into Public Health and Community Services Grant Activities Fiscal Year 2022, Fiscal Year 2023, and Fiscal Year 2024 Tperculosis Program of Greater Nashua.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion for final passage of R-21-197 by roll call.
Did I already ask for additional sponsors on this one? Thank you. The motion is for final passage of resolution 29197. Discussion on that? Would the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathwright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 12 ayes and zero nays.
That motion carries and resolution 21197 is declared duly adopted.
First reading of resolution R-21198 relative to the acceptance of $284,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into Public Health and Community Services Grant Activities FY22, FY23, and FY24 HIV Prevention Grant.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleve, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Karen, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Harriet Gathwright, Alderman Cleaver, and myself.
Second reading of resolution R-21198 relative to the acceptance of $284,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into Public Health and Community Services Grant Activities FY22, FY23, and FY24 HIV Prevention Grant.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to final passage of R-21-198 by roll call.
Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathwright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 12 ayes and zero nays.
That motion carries and resolution 21198 is duly adopted.
First reading of resolution R-21199 relative to the acceptance of $450,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into Public Health and Community Services Grant Activities FY22, FY23, and FY24 STD Workforce Development and COVID-19 Grant.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleve, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Karen, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Harriet Gathwright, and myself.
Second reading of resolution R-21199 relative to the acceptance of $450,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into Public Health and Community Services Grant Activities FY22, FY23, and FY24 STD Workforce Development and COVID-19 Grant.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion of final passage of R-21-199.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathwright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 12 ayes and zero nays.
That motion carries and resolution 21199 is declared duly adopted.
First reading of resolution R-21200 relative to the acceptance of $75,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into Public Health and Community Services Grant Activities FY22, FY23, and FY24 Healthy Homes and Lead Poisoning Case Management.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleve, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Karen, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Harriet Gathwright, and myself.
Second reading of resolution R-21200 relative to the acceptance of $75,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into Public Health and Community Services Grant Activities FY22, FY23, and FY24 Healthy Homes and Lead Poisoning Case Management.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to final passage of R-21200 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathwright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 12 ayes and zero nays.
That motion carries and resolution 21200 is duly adopted.
First reading of resolution R-21201 relative to the acceptance of $40,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into Public Health and Community Services Grant Activities FY22, FY23, and FY24 STD Prevention Grant.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleve, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Karen, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Harriet Gathwright, and myself.
Second reading of resolution R-21201 relative to the acceptance of $40,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into Public Health and Community Services Grant Activities FY22, FY23, and FY24 STD Prevention Grant.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion of final passage of R-21201. And can I speak briefly?
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. Nice job, everybody.
Alderman Lopez.
I just wanted to clarify a little bit of public health. No, this grant and then the 199 one that was for STD workforce development and COVID-19, like if ever we needed a comment, it was STD and workforce development and COVID-19. And particularly STDs have become an increasing problem over the past few years, probably partly because of our isolation in COVID and that kind of thing. But one of the things that the Public Health Department noted was that there's a surge in syphilis. So we're bringing back some blast from the past. And I would just urge the public to be cautious in your decision making.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. Any further discussion? Okay, motion is for final passage. Would the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathwright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
12 ayes and zero nays.
That motion carries and resolution 21201 is declared duly adopted.
First reading of resolution R-21202, I'm sorry.
Without objection, I'll suspend the rules to allow for a first reading of two resolutions that were received after the agenda was prepared.
My apologies.
Madam Chair.
Alderman Jettie.
So could, could, you know, I feel a need to object, but I'm not sure, because I'm not sure why this is, why these are being brought in.
Under suspension? I would have to ask the maker of the, Alderman Cleve.
Thank you, Madam President. The reason for the request for this suspension is that this is something that has a real time crunch on it. There is a current development plan in place for this property. When the developer spoke, he mentioned that if the city wanted to buy it, he would step back. Since then, he has come back. He said he still would step back, but he didn't have the authorization to turn it over to the city, to assign it to the city. He didn't have the authorization for third party. This means that we have to work with the seller, et cetera. At this point, I'm not really sure whether or not that's going to go through. But in order to do this, I refer to this oftentimes as this request here is kind of like getting preapproval for a mortgage. We have to show that we are good faith, that if we want to buy this, this suspension does nothing more than allow it to go to all of the committees. We're not going to vote on it. There will not be a second reading. It will just go to the appropriate, much like we've done with all the other suspensions that we've done. We just brought it in. There's a time crunch. We need to get this through as quickly as possible so nobody loses any money in it, if in fact they do allow us to purchase this piece of property. It's an, I could go into the details of it, but I think we just really need to talk about the suspension of it. This piece of property is connected, actually almost surrounded, in three areas of Greeley Park. It's very important that we look at it, it gets discussed and so on. I'm not asking the committee here to vote one way or the other. I'm not asking on the merits of it. I just want it to go forward, go forward for public hearing, go forward to budget, go forward to infrastructure, and to go forward to planning committee. That's all this is doing. It's just a suspension of the rules to allow it to go forward. No discussion here as to whether it's right, wrong. It will eventually come back to the board. Because it's a bond, it will need 10 votes by the, just like all other ones, the super majority. Nothing more than that, just asking for a suspension so it can move forward.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Alderman Lou.
Thank you. I haven't had a chance to look at the paperwork as I just received it, as I stepped up to attend this meeting. So I think that what we, you want to allow us to move forward is that the city of Nashua buys a piece of property? Okay. So, did we have, did we not know it was on the market before? I mean, is this just a big surprise and we had always wanted that piece of property?
Madam President, can we, can we defer this to committee? This is just a suspension of the rules to send it to a committee. We're not debating the merits of this legislation this evening. If it gets to committee and you don't agree with it, you can vote against it. But I don't want to start debating this because it's not, the only thing we're doing here is suspending the rules to bring it in.
To, to buy a piece of property?
That's what the legislation is, but that's not what we're voting on this evening.
No, I understand.
We're voting on suspension of the rules.
Sure. No, I understand.
Madam President, just a comment.
Alderman Cleve.
Thank you very much. The reason why you did not have it was because this was all, came to light on Friday.
On Friday?
Friday, this past Friday. Legislation was put through and I think Donna didn't get it until about a couple hours before this meeting started. That's when all the legislation was finalized. That's the reason why you have it now. That's the reason why we're only asking for suspension, not to discuss the merits of it one way or the other. That will happen in all the committees.
Uh huh.
And that's where it should happen.
I see.
This would be no different than if this were December 14th and this showed up without a rule of suspension.
Sure.
Nothing more, nothing less. It would still go forward.
Sure. And just a follow up?
Mm-hmm.
I, just regarding my vote, I'm, I'm going to vote against this suspension because I do feel that this body, well, there are many things that are couched in. This is a rush. And I, okay, you're nodding your head. But it suggested that there's a real time crunch here. And I personally don't care to act that way, especially when I've never heard a word about our interest in buying property at this area. But, thank you.
The motion is to suspend the rules to allow the first reading of resolution 21202. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Clemmons.
Yeah, I just wanted to be added as a co-sponsor. That was actually supposed to happen with this legislation and the other one, but I didn't get the corporation counsel in time. So if my name could be added to this one and the next one, I'd appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Clemmons. I didn't ask for additional sponsors. I was going to suspend the rules to bring it in and then ask for sponsors.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Jump the gun, that's okay. The motion is to suspend. Would the clerk please call the rule now?
Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
No.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathwright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have nine ayes and three nays.
That motion carries.
First reading of resolution R- First reading of resolution R-21202 authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $2,500,000 to purchase property abutting Greeley Park located at 15 Bartlett Avenue, map 57 lot 3.
Okay, additional sponsors?
I'm already a sponsor.
You're already a sponsor. Alderman Dowd, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Harriet Gathwright, Alderman Cleaver. And Alderman Clemmons. Given its first reading, I'll schedule a special Board of Alderman Public Hearing on Tuesday, December 7th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. Oh, and the Budget Review Committee.
First reading, do we suspend the rules for 203 as well?
No.
No. No, just for 202.
Okay.
Madam President, you did say you would suspend the rules.
For the next two.
Okay, thank you. So we did. Thank you.
Thank you. First reading of resolution R-21203 authorizing the purchase of property located at 15 Bartlett Avenue, map 57 lot 3.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Dowd, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Harriet Gathwright, Alderman Cleaver. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Planning and Economic Development and the Planning Board. New business ordinances.
First reading of ordinance 02177 updating the Administrative Services Division and Personnel ordinances.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleve, Alderman Harriet Gathwright. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee.
First reading of ordinance 02178 authorizing a stop sign on Denis Street at its intersection with Marie Avenue.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Cleve, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Harriet Gathwright. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of ordinance 02179 revisions to ordinances regarding grievance procedures for persons with disabilities.
Additional sponsors? Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Harriet Gathright. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee.
First reading of ordinance 021-80, updating the purchasing ordinances.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. There being no objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for the first reading of ordinance 21-081 that was received after the agenda was prepared.
First reading of ordinance 021-81, relative to the revision award boundaries.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Cleaver. Given its first reading, oh, and Alderman Harriet Gathright. Given its first reading, I'll schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Tuesday, December 28th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the Aldemonic Chamber. Period for public comment. I have, uh, six people who have signed up. Just so you know, there's, you come to the microphone, you give your name and address for the record, and you have a three-minute time limit. So the first person is Dana Springer.
Yes, good evening, council. My name is Dana Springer. I live at 59 Factory Street. My Alderman is Alderman Lopez. Uh, what I wanted to, uh, come to the council for is I talked to the mayor and councilman Lopez about Pearl Harbor Day on the, um, the 5th, on the 5th of December. Um, and I just wanted to kind of let the council know that, um, the country kind of went back and did some, uh, redoing of what, what was done in the past. The first dedicated destroyer is named after an African-American person, and they're breaking steel on it, so it's, it's going to be the first of its kind. Um, and that should be honored because during that time of segregation, we weren't allowed to participate the same way that, you know, other folks participated. So it should be something that, you know, throughout the country that we should honor. And, um, I, I know I, I served almost 30 years, and my, my father served in, um, World War II, the same as Doris Miller, which I told the council and the mayor that I'd get back to him with the, uh, with the information, so Pearl Harbor means, you know, thanks to our people too. Uh, I don't think we're really represented that way. And, uh, and I would like to try to, uh, be in the program on the 5th, or at least be able to have something ready, uh, for the program, if I'm allowed to. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next person to speak is Bob Lodi.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, Mr. Vice President, Mayor Dotus, all the Alderpersons at large, and all the Aldermen that represent the wards. I want to thank you for your service. It's all of you who help us have a functioning democracy and a government that works, and it's particularly challenging in this climate, so I want to thank you.
Excuse me, your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Robert Lodi, 12 Bartlett Ave.
Thank you.
So again, thank you all. Um, I'm here to speak to you about, uh, the 15 Bartlett Ave property that Alderwoman Cle brought forward. Um, for the three of you who voted against the suspension of rules, you have an open invitation to walk the park with me at any time, and you'll see exactly what the encroachment that the development of this property is allowed to go forward. This development does not address the needs of the city. It does not help with housing. It does not help protect the natural, uh, resources of the city that is Greeley Park that has been in our care for 125 years, and it does not address the other requirements that the board and the mayor have laid out. So these are expensive condos, $600,000 to $750,000. They're targeted at 55-plus, and it's a 44-unit, dense, compact, on 7,500 square feet. It is out of character with the neighborhood, it will be damaging to the park, and once that land is lost, it is gone forever. We cannot allow this to pave paradise and put up a parking lot. So I urge you to look seriously at the matter that's been referred to the appropriate committees. Um, thi, this came forward very, very quickly, with very little notice of the public. In a short period of time, um, less than four days, we've had 1,500 signatures, and it's growing rapidly. So there is widespread community support, there's an opportunity for public-private partnership, we have $200,000 already committed to support the purchase of this property, and we believe we can work together to find a public par, you know, a public-private solution that addresses the needs of all of the city, and not for a developer that is out of state, has never worked in this area, and has no ties to Nashua. I believe we need a, a local solution to our local challenges, and I urge you all to take this matter seriously and look into this opportunity. It's a once-in-a-lifetime. Let's not lose this on our watch. Thank you.
Next speaker is Kathy Lodi.
My name is Kathy Lodi, 12 Bartlett Ave. I want to thank all the people here who voted to suspend the rules so that we can carry this forward. As my husband just said, 1,522 people signed this petition in five days. Um, it has bipartisan support. Um, so I just want to thank you for, uh, allowing us to, uh, carry this discussion forward. It's something that's important to a lot of people. There's a lot of points on both sides. Um, we're not here to vilify real, anyone involved. I, I think there's an opportunity for compromise and, and a win-win situation, um, for the city and, and, and for its citizens. So I just want to thank you for moving it forward so we can have a discussion on December 7th. Thank you.
The next speak, the next speaker is Sam Katz.
Two left.
Okay. And the speaker is Tucker McGerold.
My name is Tucker McGerold. I live on 139 Hillsbury Road. Um, this is in regards to the property on 15 Bartlett. Um, I, on, on Hillsbury Road, even without this, there are already considerable, uh, traffic issues on that street. It is a, is a pass-through for all the traffic coming to the intersection of Henry Burke Highway and Manchester Street, not wanting to go that additional distance on one lane, and so they're using 130, or they're using Hillsbury Road as a cut-through for any southbound traffic on Concord Street. The traffic is, it's aggressive, it's at least double the speed limit, nothing's been done for that already. Adding these properties is going to make the use of that pass-through even worse, and there are families with kids living on that street, and it's, it's, there needs to be solutions to the traffic there before we worry about packing more people that aren't going to care how fast they're going through to get a neighborhood. Um, that, that's all I have.
The final speaker this evening is Steve D.
Yeah, me. I don't want to yell at it already. Steve Dixon, 31 Columbia Avenue. Thank you for your, your service. I couldn't do what you guys do. Are you okay with me? I just want to ask, this is, I want to, what the density, when you go home tonight, when you pull off whatever main street you pull, count 43 houses. Count 43 houses, and see how many you have there. I live on, on Columbia Avenue, by the, where the old water towers, there's not five blocks. You can't count 43 houses. So when you go home, count them, and if that's something you want in your neighborhood, my suggestion is this. 13 acres, 13 houses. They'll be nice houses. They, 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 uh, the, 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 when, when I went to the meeting, and he, he put these beautiful houses up there, oh, they were, they were beautiful, but I asked him, are those the houses you're going to put in? Well, yeah, no, yeah, no. No. 13 acres, 13 houses. That would keep the footprint of the North End. 43 houses? Again, I'll stop here. When you go home tonight, start counting, from the, you get off this street to your house, count 43 houses. The North End, here's the mayor, no, there's, that's five blocks, six blocks, that's everything. I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, Madam President, I had mentioned to this lady, I have this idea that I wanted to sign a report to make a comment.
Okay. You, you can come up. Name, name an address for the record, please.
Yes, Denise Musioli, should I go? Yep. Sorry. Denise Musioli, 611 Minhurst Road, and I'm also here, this is my first meeting, so I'm very nervous, um, but it should give you some inkling as to how much Greeley Park means to me. I have been going to Greeley Park for 46 years. Four generations of our family have enjoyed Greeley Park, and I think that any further development, even 13 houses, would be too much. Um, there's a lot of children in the inner city that are able to take the bus to Greeley Park, they're able to see trees, animals, and things like that, hide and seek, and that would be stealing all of that land away from those children. I ask every single one of you to think very hard about supporting Nashua buying that property. Um, it's, it's a treasure. We've already, we've already lost quite a bit of land in the southwest quadrant of Nashua for development between the school and soccer fields they're talking about, uh, and development down there, and it's, it's a shame. Nashua should be very proud of Greeley Park, and they should do everything they can to keep it. Many visitors to the city, you know, where should I go in the city, tourists ask, Greeley Park is always on the top of the list. Thank you for your time.
Okay, remarks by members of the board. I'm going to start on this side tonight.
Uh, Alderwoman, um, you have somebody on the.
Oh, sorry.
Am I, uh, could I please speak, Lori Ordolano?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I couldn't find the button to put my hand up. Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. Um, I would just like to, you know, make the board aware of a couple things regarding this development. Um, and we have to be cognizant of the fact that the property owner has the right to sell their property and enter into a contract to do what they're doing. Um, I understand the homeowners on, um, the west side of Concord Street not wanting this in their neighborhood, but I think we have to recognize what control and what power we have and what we do. Um, I think we have to be careful of setting a precedence here. Um, I don't agree that we have to expand Greeley Park, that there's a space limitation in there, and that this parcel is a vital part of Greeley Park. I think that everyone should look at what the developer has proposed, um, and anyone who says that, you know, we don't know his work or what he's doing, you know, look on the contractor site at the three developments that were done, you'll get a pretty good indication of his work, um, and it seems to fit in line with what was presented to us on, um, Wednesday night. And so I think it's really important, I mean, we have a development, the Camp Du Set was bought down at, um, purchased for $4 million at 132, um, oh, the road in South Nashua, um, that, um, that escapes me now, and that was 20 acres of a Boy Scout camp for years and years and years of old forest, and that is all being cut down and turned into a, you know, 40-unit, uh, or more property development. We don't run in and scoop it up and, and, and save it, and, you know, there's a reason we don't do that. Um, so, and I think there's some misinformation given out here. I would like to ask if the mayor, um, plans to recuse himself because he's a voting member of the planning board, and so is one of his, or he can have a representative of his office, and I think that, um, since it's a development in his neighborhood, he should recuse himself from voting on this, um, just to be above board on all of this. Uh, but I, you know, I want to caution you. Um, I happen to live in Litchfield, there were three developments that went in, a 55 and older, a bike path that cut right through my backyard with 20 feet of it taken, and a high school one street away, and I backed all of them. And, um, I know I was unusual to do that.
30 seconds.
I don't feel that my property lost value, um, that I made a bad decision. Uh, I wasn't popular at the time, I'll tell you that. Um, and, but it, it worked a lot. I viewed the high school as a plus. I viewed a bike path, seven-mile path off the back of my house as a, as a good thing, and the 55 and older was very cookie cutter, not like this, and I didn't think it was going to harm the property, and it didn't.
Time.
So I, I want us to be respectful of, of the process and make certain that we're allowing a fair and just process to take place here. Thank you.
Okay, remarks by members of the board. I'll still start on this side.
Can I just ask a point of order?
I'm sorry?
Can I just ask a point of or, uh, I think it's a point of order.
Alderman Lopez.
Um, I guess my first question is, is this a point of order? Does the mayor get a vote on this? I thought this was Aldemonic legislation.
It goes to the planning board.
Okay, so the question was, recuse himself from the planning board? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Remarks.
Um, I just want to say congratulations to CFO, compto, I mean treasurer, John Griffin, and I'd also like to mention that the agreement between the Nashua, City of Nashua Board of Fire Commissioners and Nashua firefighters, that, that money is, is coming from within their budget, and that was one of the things that the deputy chief had enlightened us with. That's it.
Alderman Lu.
Uh, thank you. Uh, two things I wanted to just talk on, um, it, uh, it seems to, it scares me that, um, before we have a, a clear design and before we have a, a submission to our, our planning board on something, a proposal that's, that someone is making to develop property, that we have so little confidence in our, um, planning board and our, and the process that our city has, that we feel that we have to buy this land. So if 43, um, i, i, if it's too dense, the development, then that will get worked out because City of Nashua has, has requirements, and we, and this is a process, a many-step process, but my understanding is this has not even been submitted to the City of Nashua. Um, the full details of the, I know that there was a meeting that apparently half the people from Finance Committee went to instead of our, going to our Finance Committee meeting, but, uh, you know, I would just think, why not let our planning group do their work? And if this becomes a problem, I don't know, I guess we could buy it if the city, if the citizens want to spend $2 million on a piece of property so that the North Enders, you know, feel more comfortable about their, their, uh, their neighborhood, but it just, it does seem very peculiar. I also want to speak to, I, I'm only here for another month, and, um, and I just hope that the members of the board, um, think twice before they call, as Alderman Clemmons referred to the crazies, because I don't think any of our citizens who care enough to be actively communicating about their concerns are crazy, and even if they were, I think that's a terrible word to throw around. And I hope that the voters will take note that, that this kind of comment is made, um, in reference to well-meant criticism. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to add to what Mr. Springer said earlier in public comment, um, that Doris Miller, um, was served with distinction at the Battle of Pearl Harbor, um, was there, I believe, in a custodial role, um, but, you know, when the gunner was injured, he took the gun, he fought off the attacking planes, he did more than he was trained for or was ever expected of him, and that's a credit to him. Um, and it's my understanding that the vessel that's being named for him or is due to be named is a supercarrier, so those are pretty impressive too. So, um, I just wanted to add context to that, uh, as well. Um, and then I wanted to add to the challenge that was issued earlier to count houses. I would also challenge everyone on the Board of Aldermen to look at the doorways and count people that are sleeping outside tonight. There is not a direction from City Hall where you won't see some, so that's important too. The development being proposed, uh, at Greeley Park is not going to serve them, and I've been a very vocal, uh, advocate for making sure that when we talk about affordable housing and we talk about low-income housing, we keep in mind what our priorities are, and we remember who really needs this support and this help tonight, and this weekend, for Thanksgiving weekend, it's the longest weekend, it's the least access to services you get the entire year, and there will be. And there will be people outside unsheltered. So we need to remember that, we need to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. So, um, I just wanted to tell everyone that the, um, senior outing that was held at Stella Stadium for the second year in a row went over very well. Sorry, Mayor, that you weren't there. It was a nice day. Um, they gave out about two hundred meals. The staff was, um, jovial, they had a good time, everyone was happy. And, um, I apologize, um, because DP Devry did not send out the invitations to you, whether you could have come or not. I think it's important that we remember our seniors are a big part of our community, and if this is the one way we can say thank you to them, I think that it's worth noting that this happens. Um, as far as the, uh, me voting no on suspension of this particular resolution, I don't usually, but I had a lot of concerns about it, and certainly I will be at all the events. Um, and I've lived at Greeley Park for forty years when I worked there, so I know how important that facility is, but we have to stop and, uh, make sure that we're not jumping the gun and buying things every time somebody comes in because I have property near us that's all wooded and people use it, and there's going to be about fifteen houses going in at the five hundred to six hundred thousand dollar range. And I'd like to see us not have that developed, but things move along and we have to look at it realistically. And I will always listen and make a decision based on what I think is important for the city as a whole, not for a group. And I'd like to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving, and don't eat too much turkey, and enjoy the football games. Thank you.
Alderman Dow.
Yeah, two quick things. One, um, I appreciate any celebration relative to the Pearl Harbor and the Arizona Memorial. As a former naval officer who's actually stood on the memorial and, and, and listened to the stories that are associated with that, uh, this country owes a great debt to all the people that served in that conflict, uh, with sneak attack and, and fought it off as best they could. There were a lot of people lost, and I think any recognition we give to those heroes is well worth it. The other thing is, uh, I am sponsoring the legislation on the Barker property. I think there are a lot of unanswered questions, and I think this came upon us very suddenly. And I just want to ensure that all the questions get logical answers. Quite frankly, having been on the zoning, chairman of the zoning board before, I'm, I'm not sure that the planning board would allow what was being proposed, but, um, there's still a number of questions that we need answered before, uh, we allow that kind of a development in that neighborhood because it's, it's well out of character with the neighborhood. Thank you. Thank you.
Alderman Clay.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, a couple of things first, I'm gonna start with happy Thanksgiving to everybody. And, um, for those in the North End, the football game on, uh, Thursday morning, I hope you'll be there, and bring your canned goods. Um, I'd also like to congratulate CFO Griffin, um, on his new position. And then, seeing that it's been discussed, um, I'm gonna discuss the fifteen Bartlett. It is not in a fifty-five-plus community, they're just trying to entice people fifty-five, that's how they feel that the bill will be. It is also not in Greeley Park. There had been some people who thought it was in Greeley Park. It is just surrounded mostly by Greeley Park, and it would actually, purchasing would connect a piece up on Columbia, um, and would kind of finish that, that corner of it. But putting that aside, one of the, the, the issues is, is partly the neighborhood and the change to it. To me, that was secondary, and I apologize for all those that live there that, um, they, I've talked to them about, I know how they feel, I also know about how important it is to have housing, housing of all kinds, but especially affordable housing, and this is not affordable housing under any circumstances. Additional cars do create a safety issue. Um, I think the plan that was put forward, they showed a very beautiful plan, they showed gorgeous home, they invited people to go and look at some of their other, um, things that they built. I think them to be very reputable and very good people. I have nothing bad to say about them. Um, the gentleman that I've been dealing with and speaking with, he has been very honest and forthright, and I've been very appreciative of that. The issue with Greeley Park is the amount of forestry that will be, um, destroyed on the Barker property. Uh, Mr. Barker, Alan Barker, used to pay people on a regular basis to clean that area. And truthfully, I think that area is probably even cleaner than Greeley Park is. It didn't have any dead trees in it. Um, towards the end of his life, I don't think he, uh, was keeping quite up to it, but he was very proud of that property. He kept it as a conservation area. This will get rid of at least one side of Greeley, we will completely get rid of all the, the trees, all the forestry. The homes will go right up against the, um, the border of Greeley Park. As you walk through Greeley Park, and I think somebody did mention that, take a walk. As you walk by Greeley Park, you'll see a barbed wire fence, um, kind of a brown stockade fence, you'll see houses there now. Even if they put certain pieces of, um, uh, tree and foliage in, you will still see houses. The emissions from the vehicles will affect Greeley Park. We have bears, we have deer, we have raccoons, we have foxes, we have coyotes, we have the little annoying squirrels and chipmunks, but they're adorable to look at. Uh, we have all kinds of flora and fauna in Greeley Park. This will affect it. Whether people want to agree to it or not, forty-three homes that close together, um, they show this very beautiful, beautiful kind of, uh, park, and you can see right where Greeley is, you can see how close those homes are to it. Um, it would be a shame, it would be a shame, because those trees, the outer trees also protect the inner trees. The inner trees are not as strong as the outer trees are. Once we remove that, we have wind shear issues, we have other things, we will destroy that portion of Greeley Park. I'm convinced of it. No, I'm not an arborist, no, I don't have that information, but I have enough intelligence to know what will happen. And I do not want to see that happen. I agree with what Alderman Lopez said, our key is to be looking at, you know, the people that are sleeping in doorways, the people that are sleeping on the street, the people that have been sleeping Greeley Park at times. We've seen encampments in there and so on, those are the people we need to look for as far as homes and so on are concerned. Um, a comment which I thought was little curt, that we had to cancel the fiscal, the finance meeting because two people, well, I think she said, the majority of the people went to that meeting, there were two. And the bottom line is, if the others had shown up, it would not have had to been changed. But we have people that don't come to the meeting. So if you want to get a little curt by it, talk about them. And I apologize for being a little rude here, but I thought that was an unnecessary comment. There were two people from the finance committee meeting, myself and the mayor, that went to that meeting. Both of us are Ward Three residents, I represent the people of Ward Three, and I should have been there. Whether you like it or not, that's where my place was, with the constituents of Ward Three. I was proud to be there, I was happy to hear this presentation, I had heard it just days before, because they were kind enough to show it to me ahead of time. We found out about this, it was not on the market, it was within the right of the owner, um, the seller, I should say. The family has a right to sell to whoever they want, and we as a city and the citizens have the right to say, we don't like it. It's not a NIMBY, it's not a thing of not in my backyard, it is, don't hurt my park. That affects the entire city. And as was mentioned, we have well over fifteen hundred people that have signed a petition, and they are not from Ward Three. They're from all over Nashua, all over the state, they're all over the place, because Greeley Park means a lot to a lot of people. If you look on any Sunday when I go walking through there, there are people that are picnicking there, on that side of Greeley Park. A lot of the, a lot of the, um, license plates are from Massachusetts, we get a lot of people that come here. So to just dismiss this, and I do appreciate all of those, uh, members who said no to the, um, suspension, and I can understand that, and I, 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 I think you are right to deal with what you feel is right, and no one should be criticizing you. I'm glad it's moving forward, I think it, it deserves its day in court, and we'll see what happens. No decision was made here today, and no decision will be made at any single meeting, but we do need to talk about it. So, thank you very much, Madam President. You're welcome.
Alderman O'Brien.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, I would really would like to congratulate John Griffin to his, uh, new accepted duties. I wish him the best of luck. I have known, uh, since being, serving this board for six years, worked with him, my prior life being on the fire department with the fire department budget, I know the work that he does, and fully confident that he will continue in his new position of service professionally. And the final thing, probably similar to what some of the other Aldermen said, oh by gosh, by golly, it's time for mistletoe and holly. Here we go, right into Thanksgiving. So I want to first wish everybody happy Thanksgiving. Don't eat too much, remember the pep mo bismol, have fun. Be careful driving and everything. But also, too, keep in mind, this is the season of giving as much as it is receiving. And there's a lot of charities out there, you know, we go to the markets, we'll see the guy with the kettle, uh, maybe it's time to partake, open the wallet, and, uh, contribute. Yes, Alderman Lopez is correct. At any given night, you can drive to buy the portico of St. Patrick's Church and see people sleeping right down on Main Street. That is very sad. And that needs to be addressed. But unfortunately, not at this particular time. So the best way that we all can compensate for that is to, uh, accept this season that was coming upon us, and to remember people who are less fortunate, and if you are fortunate, to make the proper contributions to the charities that will go back to the ones in need. And I thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom, Donna? Alderman Clemens.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, in regards to, um, previous speakers' comments, uh, about what I said, if I, if I said somebody, if I referred to somebody as crazy, or I said that, um, um, or called people crazies, I guess, that's because I'm crazy, so sometimes I can, you know, I, I know one when I see one. But, um, what I meant to say was a person not living in reality. Um, and there's reality, and then there's a person's perception. And if you think that the city of government is not a, or the city government is not a republic, and you think that the city government is a dictatorship, and you go around telling people that, you're not living in reality. Some people might go so far as to say that you're crazy, um, but you're certainly not living in reality. Um, so that, that, I just wanted to clarify that. And, uh, the other thing is, I hope everybody has a crazy time at Thanksgiving. Uh, take care, everyone.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom? Okay. I would like to, um, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. I appreciate all of you who came out here and, uh, got a lesson in civics this evening. Uh, thank you for being here. Um, and that's all I have. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Alderman Clay.
I just want a second bite, a bite at the apple, and it's, it's more of a personal privilege. Um, this Thanksgiving is my birthday, so.
Well, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Alderman O'Brien.
Uh, a committee announcement?
Oh, committee announcements. Excuse me, we're still meeting, we just have two more minutes. Committee announcements? Alderman O'Brien.
Yes, uh, in following some of the social media, there seemed to have been some, uh, confusion. Tomorrow night was supposed to be the, uh, meeting of the Committee of Infrastructure. Uh, I think looking at trying to get a quorum together, everybody got pies to bake and getting preparation for Thursday, the big day. Common sense allowed to reschedule it, uh, because of the holiday approaching in December. We now are looking at December eighth at seven PM here in the automatic chamber. So it's relatively close, so, believe me, we're gonna be discussing Main Street, so there should be no barriers to anybody in coming to the particular meeting. I had to throw that in there. Thank you, Madam President.
Yep. Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. Personnel will be meeting on Monday, uh, December sixth at seven o'clock, and as you saw, you, uh, you have some new ordinances coming up for, uh, personnel.
Other committee announcements? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the November twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
The motion is to adjourn. Would the clerk please call roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clay.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lu.
Yes.
Alderman Juddi.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have twelve yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries, and we are adjourned at nine thirty-five. Thank you, everyone.